Next to the stage, and at that point, he went ahead and strapped on the pack, and then tried to walk forward, and he just about fell on his tail end. Because it was 125 pounds worth. And yet, Major Larson, that's, you know, part of the job. So it gave me another bit of different perspective. I was really impressed with his presentation. I was really, I was bowled over by it. I took a photograph of him, and I just hope it does justice. And I'd also like to thank Mr. McNambo for his service in providing the flag for Danny Bouvier. I think it was completely appropriate. It choked me up. And I'm a grumpy old fart, so it's kind of... All right, so anyway, rather than, rather than destroy the spirit, I'd like to just close with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem, Sylvia Robles.
Yes, as far as the election, I'll keep it abbreviated because next month we'll do it, but congratulations to you, Mayor. And congratulations, Doug. You're a grumpy old guy, but you're a good old grumpy councilman. You really contribute. And congratulations, Jeff Free. I had to, like, look at my calendar. It's been a whirlwind of city activities. But first, before I get into the events, you know, our staff has really been working hard. Our administrative staff and our maintenance staff have just really been doing their weekly jobs and doing all these events. And I want to make sure that, you know, you are all understand that we do notice and we do appreciate it. And I hope that we can recognize you all, you know, in the near future. Starting with the Halloween hot, I've never had so much fun. I mean, I kind of get grumpy on Halloween because I kind of like, how many years can you keep answering doors? So my husband says, buy some candies. I'll take care of the house. You go. And I just was, it was just so much fun. And when I got home, he said only two people knocked on the door. So, you know, this is something that, you know, I hope we can continue doing in any form or fashion with other groups or not. But let's stay, you know, involved. The Country Fair was very nice. The Veterans' Event, to me, this one was just one of the best. It was just from beginning to end, just phenomenal. And I really enjoyed it. And I told Major Larkin, he was quite strappy looking in that uniform. And I think he knew it, too. On the 15th of November, I attended the Amitrans Plans and Programs meeting. And that's when they start talking about some satisfaction surveys and user surveys. And I was kind of just amazed that, and I was going to ask staff to follow up, but it was like there's seven passengers daily on their large bus. And I think part of the problem that we really have to address is access to the bus stations, and that's countywide. Other than Victor Valley has its own system. But the way it works is that it's kind of a partnership as far as the shelters. Like, cities will give them easements, but it's kind of like a lot of them just have the little sign. And if you're waiting, willing to wait there in the mud or dirt or, you know, side of the road, you can access the bus. They've gone after a grant for premium shelters, and we've discussed it with some of our residual RDA money. But the rollout they have, and it's very frustrating to me, is two premium bus shelters a year. I mean, in the largest county in the United States, I don't think the impact's going to be very big. But I just thought I'd share these, this with my peers because I think it's something we need to focus on is what we're looking at. Strategic planning in that arena, and you're going to be the, in charge of our regional transportation body.
We'll see.
And so it, so I thought that was something I would point out. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay. I have to say, thank you to staff for all the extra work you've been putting in for the events. I'm going to keep it brief, but I did really enjoy, most recently, the Veterans' Day experience. There's a lot of extra time that staff put in on that. And I want to thank the Wall of Freedom Committee. I also want to take, thank Dance Dimensions, all the Girl Scouts, all the Boy Scouts, ROTC, and I'm sure I left somebody off. But I will say, Mr. Duffy, that laser light show. There are people saying we need to have another one. It doesn't have to be Veterans' Day, but I don't know. You do things like that, and people want more. So, good job. The SBCTA Board meeting that I attended was on November 7th. And we had hearings to consider resolutions of necessity. I brought out that we had previews for that. For Archibald Avenue improvements and the Interstate 10 corridor contract one, those were approved and they're moving forward. Hearings to consider resolutions of necessity is the beginning of eminent domain. Although they, SBCTA staff continues to negotiate with property owners to hopefully come up with a, with a good resolution for all. We, we had staff come forward and ask us to reject bids received for a construction contract for the Redlands Passenger Rail project. One of the, one of the nice things about SB 1, when it passed, is there's a lot of extra money for construction projects. And so one of the things about SB 1 and all those extra construction projects is it means that a lot of construction companies have a lot of work, which is nice. But it also means that you don't get as many bids as you used to get when you put things out to bid. And I guess for this particular one, the bids came in double what was expected. And so at that point, SBCTA staff could not in good conscience ask us to, to support that. So they, they asked us to reject all the bids and allow them to go back and figure out another way to, to put that out to bid. Maybe, maybe carve it up a little bit differently. So we did agree to reject that. We also received a presentation on the Generation Go, which is Career Pathways Initiative. The San Bernardino County Workforce Development Board established this Generation Go Career Pathways program as a countywide program that provides work-based learning opportunities to high school students. I guess my time is up. All right, I'll wrap up. So a key component of work is ensuring that the county's youth are ready to enter the workforce with the skills needed to complete, to compete today and in the future. And I believe our Colton Joint Unified School District is working towards being a participant in that. And so with, since my time is up, I will move on, and we will go to new business. The first of which is Item 10, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Appointment. May we have a staff report, please?
I apologize for that, Mayor.
That's okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Staff report before you this evening is a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Appointment with Sherri Freund. This staff report supports all adopted goals and all adopted core values of the city's council's 2030 vision. On July 25th, 2017, the City Council of Grand Terrace approved a resolution to reestablish a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, which meets the second Thursday of each month at City Hall and is made up of five voting members. Currently, the committee has one member vacancy as a result of Councilmember Wilson's appointee resigning to take an appointment with the Planning Commission. Councilmember Wilson has requested Sherri Freund apply to serve as his appointee to the committee, and staff recommends City Council appoint Ms. Freund to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, as well as Ms. Freund is here as well. She'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff at this time? All right. Are there any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Protem, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I would just love to, once we act on the agendas, to have her come up and say a few words so I can meet her.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Cheryl Freud to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Robles, second by Councilmember Doug Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes. Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNambo voting yes.
All right. Welcome. If you would, please come and say a few words. Thank you.
Too short. I just want to say thank you. I've served in the community with Little League and soccer, and I've been looking to do something a little more citywide, so I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to do this. Item number 11, Grand Terrace Commercial Signage Loan Program. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. So this item before the council, as introduced by the mayor, is the City of Grand Terrace Economic Development Commercial Loan Program. This program does comply with our 2030 Vision Statement, goal number three, to promote economic development. Because it, the sign program will stimulate private investment in our commercial centers, improve the aesthetics of the commercial centers, and also increase patronage into the centers. On October 9th, the City Council approved a list of eligible projects for use of the bond proceeds. And one of the projects is the Barton Road Business Sign Program. In approving this list, the City Council prioritized $100,000 budget for, for the program. So this commercial sign program would allow a business, excuse me, a property owner of a commercial center to apply to the city to fund a loan to construct a freestanding or a pylon sign. And so this would be in a center that does not currently have one, or that has one that needs to be upgraded. But these are just different examples of either a monument sign or a pylon sign. The sign program is intended to encourage commercial landowners to install the sign through a low-interest program. It also applies to properties within the commercial corridors. And it would also use the $100,000 budget. So any one property owner, the maximum amount of the loan that they can apply for is $50,000. But the budget overall is $100,000, and the loan would be repaid within a five-year term. So a little bit the way that this would work, for instance, let's say this commercial center, this, this property owner had these businesses in their center, but they weren't generating a lot of traffic because they felt the business advertisement wasn't there. And by constructing a sign and participating in the program, they would generate the increased traffic, resulting in increased sales tax generated by that commercial center as a direct result of the business advertisement sign. So they would be basically leveraging that increased sales tax to repay the loan. And the repayment would be either through a direct payment to that loan or through a credit of the sales tax generated. So this chart provides how that would work. So let's say a commercial property owner borrowed $50,000. And so for the first year, well, for the, for the five years, the $50,000 would be repaid by $10,000 increments. But let's say year one, the increased sales tax is $3,000. So that $3,000 is applied to the 10, and they would have to pay $7,000. And so for each year, that analysis would be done. So if the sales tax was at $10,000 for that year, such as in year three, then there's no repayment. We would credit that sales tax towards the loan. In year four, if $15,000 was generated, then again, there's no payment for that year. And so this, this loan repayment program is very similar to the economic development incentive that was given to, that the City Council approved for Woody's Restaurant. And so provided that certain threshold is met through that economic development incentive agreement, then that loan is credited based upon meeting those thresholds. And so here, the threshold would be the increased sales tax. The property owner would provide us that information. However, our property tax, our sales tax consultant would verify that that increase was, was indeed attained for the, for that year. And so included in the staff report is the guidelines to the program and also an application that a property owner would complete to allow us to look at it preliminary to ensure that the program guidelines are being met. We would give preference to centers with no freestanding sign, but that's not a requirement. Some of our centers are older centers that don't have have adequate signage, and so, they would be qualified for this program as well. The owner does have to invest 20%, the initial investment of the sign, at least 20%. So, they also have some, some skin in the game, so to speak. The sign has to cost at least $5,000. And of course, it's repaid over five years, and the owner is required to obtain zoning and building permits for the sign. And once that building permit is issued, then the sign would have to be constructed within 60 days of permit issuance. So, that, in a nutshell, is how we envision the program working. And so, we would ask that the council approve the Economic Development Commercial Signage Loan Program and authorize the city manager to implement the program, with any minor revisions that might need to be done to implement the goals and objectives. And with that, I am available to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Does council have questions of staff? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple comments and a question. My, my question is with respect to the Barton Road specific plan. What if there's a conflict between this program as proposed and the Barton Road specific plan, the signage component of it? How would that be reconciled?
So, this, this particular program, it's, it's more guidelines as far as how the loan program would work. The sign that is proposed would still need to meet the zoning code requirements and the Barton Road specific plan sign requirements. So, so we don't anticipate a conflict in that regard.
Okay. Thank you. With respect to a property owner or a shopping center, how do you establish the base year? And what I'm referring to is, let's say, we were reviewing an application for the old Stater Brothers Center prior to grocery outlet occupying the former Stater Brothers site. How would you make that calculation? Is the base year established at the time of application as opposed to new businesses that could arrive and increase sales tax but unrelated to the signage program?
So, yes, we, we would establish the base year as the time that they apply for the program. And we do have that information through our consultant. But, but at the time of the application, the applicant would identify the business that's being advertised on the sign that they anticipate is going to create that increased sales tax. So, for instance, in the example I gave, there's, there's two businesses. Let's say that property owner said, "Being able to advertise for staples and home goods is going to increase my sales tax." So, we would look at subsequent years, we would look at the sales tax generated by those businesses above and beyond the, the base year to, to identify that increased sales tax and how much would be credited to the repayment each year.
But, but unrelated to any new business that might locate to that center, I assume?
Yes, they would need to identify the business that they're utilizing or establishing the increase from.
Okay, okay. And my last comment is, excuse me, I believe their agreement requires the payment of prevailing wages to the extent required by law. And it would be my recommendation that the council consider including the statutory and regulatory provisions that, that in fact require payment of prevailing wage, so as to eliminate any confusion on the part of the applicant's part. Oftentimes, the applicants aren't aware of prevailing wage requirements, or even if they are aware, don't believe that the, that it applies to them. But with respect to the...
Yes. So, the, the program guidelines do identify that prevailing wage is required. There is an actual loan contract that, so this, the guidelines and the pre-application is the initial stage, but once the applicant decides they are, they do want to move forward with this loan program, there will be loan documents that identifies those items.
Thank you, Director Molina. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Any further questions of staff? Mayor Protem?
I would just like to hear from whoever owns, the city manager or staff where you have experience implementing a program like this and how it went.
Mr. Duffy?
So, my experience implementing a similar program like this was about 25 years ago in the city of Redlands for their facade program, where the redevelopment agency went through and they, they did facade programs. And so, they basically invited, they provided advancement for the businesses, and they were paid, they were paid back over, over time for the, for the increase in sales tax. So, there were some sample examples like that, and also just the partnership between the cities and the businesses, whether they were a sign program or another enhancement to, to spur in that economic development. So, we've been very successful in, in doing that in terms of, one of the reasons, one of the things that Ms. Molina mentioned in the program is the 20% contribution from the business. And then also, the, the amount, the minimum amount of $5,000. So, this program, and I think as Councilman Henderson mentioned, it would be quite beneficial for a, a new business coming into the city who wanted to make sure that they had a, they had a big splash because they're starting out with a zero, with a zero base for, for the year. But we believe that this is another, another way that we're going to be able to enhance the, the traffic on our major corridors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. Ms. Molina, I see, I, I agree with the idea of the Barton Road specific plan being the guideline, but this kind of a project seems to kind of nip at the idea of a, almost a specific plan integer so far as, you know, what you produced for us here on the examples on this. It would seem to me that we might be doing ourselves a disservice if we have a myriad of different versions compared to maybe something that has a theme, you know, kind of a theme. So, is there a way that we can implement that sort of thing before we start the loan process?
So, a thematic design or graphic that would be consistent through the different, we, we can definitely look at, we can add something like that into the guidelines, yes.
I know when we did the original, the general plan revamp, we did some things that were a little bit modern, and that was, we basically included a lot of pictures rather than just plain old drawings and stick figures and all that sort of thing, to give it the flexibility, but also give people an idea of what they were looking at. And it would seem to me that it would behoove us to do some kind of circumstance like that, because as we know, as the way our signs are set up right now, even though we have the Barton Road specific plan, we have a myriad of applications. And, you know, that's bound to happen, especially in relation to the technology out there so far as signs. So, I'm, I'm thinking it would be a good idea for them to have some kind of a guideline. I'm not talking about Laverne or, you know, or San Dimas or one of those areas where you all wear cowboy hats as you walk down the street, but it should be, you know, a little bit uniform. So...
Actually, the city manager and I had a discussion about that. We, we talked about establishing a thematic graphic or, or design, at the same time balancing that out to ensure that these centers do retain some identity to that particular center. And so, we'll continue to work on that and implement it into our design guidelines.
Sure.
You know, one of the things you can also think of, you can think of it this way. So, with that sort of theme approach, you could establish a certain style that's already been paid for and really systematically easy to implement.
Got you.
But then you also have businesses that try to stand out with something unique. So, those are the things that you're working with. But certainly having that palette to be able to say, you know, a sign should have certain, you know, Ms. Molina and I talked about was, I, I saw this one city that had this Delta Shores, and all their signs had the little symbol on them. If you look at the city of Colton, majority of their signs have the city of Colton on them, even though they're, they're private businesses. So, they, they've got some standards that they apply. So, we can certainly have this program where we have a standard sign that's easy to implement because it's already been approved. And then you could have those individuals that are still within the confines of the Barton Road specific plan and the, and the sign code, but they were expressing some more individuality.
Thank you. You know, as a matter of fact, this kind of hinges on, on a thing that happened a few years ago. And that's actually what I was going after when I went after the design for that monument sign that has the Lions Club on it and church organization and the rest of it. The idea was, is that if we already had something, had a silhouette of the Blue Mountain circumstance, then why not reflect that again, you know, so that maybe we could head toward, towards something like that. I, as you know, I've stated and pretty recently that I think we need to do ourselves the favor of cleaning up our, our passageway, so to speak. And, you know, it doesn't mean it's going to be a major operation. It just means it gets a little slicker. So, thank you.
And if I might add, Mayor, just to, to his comment in, in relation to cleaning up the corridor, if you notice that some of the components that we have in the loan program is that you, you can't do a new sign and have landscaping that's inconsistent, that's going to, it's either blocking it or it's going to eventually grow and, and block it and so on. So, we're, we're being very mindful of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey?
Well, that's one of my main concerns. The biggest thing I hear from all business owners is the sign ordinance that we have here in the city. You know, it's being confusing. Doesn't make sense, you know, how much signage they could have on the windows, what signs can they have out there? And then we're going to implement this other thing, all the partnership to be in signs. So, besides having, you know, I agree, you know, uniformity of signs, but we need to make sure for our sign ordinance to get with these other businesses that were, make it user-friendly. Because I'm telling you, well, Mr. Duffy, you know that, I hear it all the time, like, hey, I can't get this done, I can't get that done, this doesn't make sense, I don't understand this and that. And I read it, and it doesn't make sense to me either, you know? So, we need to work on that, not only, you know, if we're going to build signs, but we have to, you know, with our other businesses we have to make it a user-friendly for them. So, that's one of my concerns.
Did you have a question in there, Councilmember Hussey?
No, I was just, can we make it something in the protocol where we could have that, where we could go back and work on that sign ordinance and maybe get with these businesses to see what, you know, will actually work for them, besides we just having all these crazy signs and make sure we don't have a, another one of these Vegas signs that the city actually put up that you can't read the thing, you know? I know it's nice when you go through cities and, and you see the uniformity of signs, but can we, Mr. Duffy, somehow work with the, on the sign ordinance again to make it a more of a user-friendly? That was my question.
Mr. Duffy?
Well, what I would recommend is that what we can do is we should reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, and we can host a meeting about the sign, the sign code. And if they're, if they have any businesses that have questions or concerns, you know, one of the things, if you look at the original sign ordinance that we had, and we had some things that the real estate companies were not happy with. And based on them coming down and having that conversation, you guys adjusted the sign code. So, it's really kind of having, we can certainly have a workshop, you know, with the businesses to explain the current sign code, get some feedback. And if it is an overwhelming response that there's some things that we need to, we need to clean up. One of the things that I often ask cities or, or businesses when they, when they have questions like that is, so, they say, "Your sign code's not friendly, your sign code's not this." So, it's okay. So, tell me, give me an example of another city where they're doing X, Y, and Z. And then, so if they're, if they can do a program that's, that's smooth, then we should be able to duplicate the same thing. And so, we're always open to, to information like that. So, I think certainly reaching out to the business community, partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, offering an opportunity for a sit-down and a discussion, we could bring that back to the council.
Director Molina, with this particular program, will the review of application go to Planning Commission? Will it come to council? Or is it something that's done over the counter?
The, the implementation of the loan program, it would come to council if it exceeds the city manager's authority, which is at $10,000. Unless the council is indicating that they would like to see all of them come before the council, we can do that too. But we had anticipated following our purchasing guidelines, which is under ten city councils' authority, excuse me, city manager's authority, and over 10, it would be council's authority.
All right. And then the signs, as you stated, go through review as standard, and some of them might go to Planning Commission, depending?
Yes. So, the, the sign, the sign, the monument signs, as long as they're meeting the sign code, they're done, they're approved at a staff level. But some larger centers may want to do a sign program that allows them to look at taller signs or more sign area. That's, that's what was done with the New Stater Brothers Center. They have those, the 20-foot-high pylon signs and a few more freestanding signs than is permitted and greater sign area, and that was done through a sign program. So, if a, a, a commercial center wanted to do something above the standard level, what's allowed, they can apply for a sign program, and that does go to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, did you have another question?
Yeah, I, I just wanted, since Councilman Hussey touched on an area that I'm also concerned about, I just wanted to share with the other members that I've shared with the city manager that I haven't been happy with how we went through the sign ordinance, and I haven't been happy with the kind of advice or explanation on the landmark cases and how they should be interpreted. And I was kind of hoping that, you know, we would have new council kind of do another looksee and explain it to me all over again, where, you know, if I don't feel comfortable with it or I don't feel convinced with it, it's hard to, to legislate or administer with it. It felt like there was a lot of add-on things to, to appease people. And it just seemed like, well, wait a minute, why did we open this up again? But not to get too deep into this other, I just wanted to go ahead and, and mention that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Are there any other questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing now it all open to public comment, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for further deliberation and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Henderson?
This topic is, is one that I think merits serious attention by the council. In the future, all of the comments made by my colleagues, I think, are, are worthy of merit and worthy of additional consideration. And I say that because during the course of my career, I worked for five cities. And every city I worked at, this had a discussion took place, that is, the sign code is unfriendly. I don't know that you can find a city in Southern California or in California where there's general consensus that the sign code is business-friendly. It's, it's a difficult task. And I want to echo what Mr. Duffy said about having outreach with the community and the business community and the, and the chamber, because what I've noticed, even here in Grand Terrace, is you have businesses that are part of a, of a chain. And that chain has specific sign code requirements that may or may not comply with, with our sign code compliance and so, requirements. So, if, if they're a franchisee or if they're an owner of a, of a, of a company that, that has specific sign code requirements that do not comply or conflict with our, our sign code, it's, it's an issue for them. In order to maintain their relationship, their business relationship with the franchiser, they must establish certain types of signage, which conflict or may conflict with what we have here in Grand Terrace. So, the, the outreach with the chamber, I can't emphasize that enough. I know I've talked to several of our service station owners because they have monthly promotional activity. And it almost certainly places them in conflict with our, with our sign code. That's just one example. So, I, I believe that this is a fruitful discussion. It should continue. I think that this, this particular program can be used as the basis for, for more detail, a deeper dive by the council and the community as a whole as it relates to our sign program going forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Any further comments? Anyone who would like to offer a motion or direction to staff on this item?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve the Economic Development Commercial Signage Loan Program and authorize the city... Signage Loan Program and authorize the city manager to implement the program, which may include minor revisions to the guidelines in keeping with the goals and objectives of the program.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 12, which is Contract Amendment for Final Design of Commerce Way. Mr. Alan French, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Alan French, Public Works Director, here to present this item, which supports the 2030 goal, number two, maintaining public safety. We are completing the design of Commerce Way on the northern part of the alignment, um, at this time and the project will utilize as much, uh, existing right-of-way as, as we have out there and there is a need for additional right-of-way. This amendment, um, adds areas to the south of the project, which, the light green is the city project and the darker green is, uh, the southern portion, which would be, um, done by, um, Lewis Project as it comes forward. This amendment is to cover right-of-way acquisition documents for the four parcels, three to the south for Commerce and then one to the south for the Collector Street. This amendment includes, um, right-of-way engineering, exhibits, legal descriptions and plaits for negotiation purposes. This amendment also includes additional compensation for the, uh, additional effort of, uh, $29,890. The cost is, will be as part of the project, which is, um, 60% paid for by Measure I and 40% is covered by our DIF. Staff, we are recommending approving the amendment at this time and I'm here to answer any questions, should the council have any.
Thank you, Director French. Other questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open it to public comment. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
May I move approval on recommendations one and two?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. And we are on to city manager communications. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a, a few comments regarding some items, but before I start that, I'd like to just kind of go through some of my notes in relation to what I heard tonight regarding how we're going to be reporting back to the council on a few things. Councilman Hesse did reference, uh, the Community Cleanup Day that we had a while back. One of the things from that discussion that we had, uh, with those community cleanup days, um, i- is that, uh, we're looking at trying to do a, a particular project next year. So for example, like painting all of the, the retaining walls on Mount Vernon and Barton and, and, um, Main Street. And we believe that with a program like that, we'll get quite a lot of participation. We've already talked to the, to the high school and their students will be, are very jazzed about trying to do a program like that. Uh, also, Councilman Hesse mentions for us to kind of try to revisit or examine the sign code and then based on that, those, that conversation, uh, Mayor Protem also felt that we needed to have some further legal explanation and, and kind of update on where we are with our, our sign codes. We'll move forward with those particular items. Uh, Mayor, uh, Protem also referenced, uh, that we need to really sort of stay focused and kind of look at our access to bus shelters, bus structures. And that we did talk about that in the past, but we will make sure that it's on our list still and we'll keep trying to find avenues to ensure that, um, the bus shelters, uh, are adequate and also that we, you know, we've had some problems with the senior bus services in terms of, um, picking up, having access, pickup from the, the, the Blue Mountain Villa. So we're, we're in constant contact in, in that particular area. Uh, in addition to that, I did want to just kind of reference some of the slides that we have from Sunday night's, um, event, uh, where we had the laser light show and, um, uh, it was a really a good event in terms of from the start, from the, from the wheelchair basketball game to the presentation, uh, the ceremony, uh, to the food trucks, uh, that were on hand to, uh, the laser light show. Here's one of my favorite shots here. Okay, let me just jump back here. Also wanted to, um, let the council know that we're actually going to starting our program now to kind of go out and look at these dead lawns. Uh, and so we'll be sending notices out to, to residents where they have dead lawns. Now, it's okay if you have a brown lawn or you've got zero escaping, but if you have a dead lawn where, where it is impacting your neighborhood, we will send you a notice to try to get you to, to comply with, uh, the city code. And it's, it'll be listed there and it's, our process is to make contact with the resident and, and try to get them to comply. We're not going out finding anybody, we're going to send out notices, we're asking them to comply with, with the current code and then we'll have that, we'll start that process from that point. In addition to that, uh, we have, uh, on November the 29th, 2018, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, the tree lighting ceremony. It's got a Candy Land theme, uh, this year, uh, and this, have a phenomenal group of volunteers. They just seem to get better every year in terms of what they're doing. The skating rink was very popular last year, so it's coming back this year with double the size, uh, and, uh, actually going to be starting pre-sale of this, of this, uh, this week for, uh, the skating rink. And, um, we hope that everyone comes out and joins us. It's going to be another great light-up Grand Terrace, Terrace event. And with that, Mayor, I conclude my comments.
All right, thank you very much. We do not have a closed session tonight, so I will adjourn and in our adjourning tonight, we remember Patricia Pat Nix and John, Johnny Madison and we adjourn in their honor. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 11th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, council colleagues, for your discussion. We are adjourned.